Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the invocation? And we have Ron Watford from Love Incorporated, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Ron here? No. Then we're going to go to Steve McIntosh for the invocation, please.
Thank you very much. Because we all pray in our own ways, please join the council in silent prayer remembering our troops overseas protecting our liberties and the city we love. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Slataca, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slataca.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simon.
Here.
Councilman Moncar.
Here.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Are you one so bright and chipper? Look at us. Only for nine o'clock. Public comment on agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak on any agenda item, agenda items only, please come forward. One at a time, one at a time. You're up.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, Mr. Mayor, is this the proper time to, for the public comment on the second reading about Pelican? Or am I at the wrong time for that?
No, you could, you could...
It's just, it's just very brief. I just want to remind everyone that I've been a property owner over 40 years and lived here year-round for over 30. And I'm just a little bit disappointed that certain respected community leaders in Estero have chosen to make remarks against our elected officials here in Benita regarding this annexation in Pelican Landing. As far as I'm concerned, all I heard when the vote was taken was, "City Council voted to allow these people to decide their own future." And I think that's what the democratic way is. If they choose to go with Benita, fine. If they don't, that's fine. That is their decision. And it's my understanding, I may be wrong, that not only is the area, or that residential area divided, but in some instances, I was told, the dividing line goes right through some property. So let's just give these people the opportunity to decide their future. And that goes also for Meadowbrook, the week's fishing camp, and Eldorado Acres. Estero, you've got a big job. We applaud you. Go ahead with your incorporation things, because we went through the same growing pains, too. We had people here who wanted to secede from Lee and go to Collier County, but we had dedicated people who really studied it. And you can do the same thing. But please, please don't keep passing these remarks, which are wrong and negative. Let the people decide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
William Lewis, write a newsletter, "Let's Talk Benita Politics." I believe we do all agree that this issue on the DRGR...
I'm sorry, this is on agenda items. Mr. Lewis is on agenda items.
Oh, on agenda, it's not on the agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I apologize. Then I'll...
You're welcome to talk about anything else.
No, no.
Mr. Mayor?
Like this young lady here talked on the annexation...
That's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor. You had said that you will be the lead since Councilman McIntosh got banned from speaking, but you will take the lead now to go there at their meeting and discuss whatever you have to say. Is that, that's correct? Well, I tell you, this has created, not just you going there, that has nothing to do with it, but I don't believe, or I don't understand why you people don't realize what you have done in the repercussions of just the fact that they now have to become a city. They become a city because of you. Not that they ever wanted to become a city, but because of what you are doing, they have no alternative, no options. Okay? A lot of people feel that it's envious of what that farm did in such a short time to become the jewel of southwest Florida. Okay? If the continuation of annexation, they have no, again, no alternative but to become a city, then it makes it more difficult. But the sever of, between Benita and Estero is something that I don't believe, it's an open wound, and I don't believe it'll be healed in years. Maybe never. But that's my humble opinion, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. Rick Steinmeier. Reference to number 10 appeals. I believe that Lopez has, with good faith effort, talked with community development as to where the setbacks on a trailer can be placed on his property. I feel that it was more than an oversight, that they didn't inform him that the zoning wouldn't allow a trailer on there. I think, I don't see anybody clamoring to buy this property. I don't see where the value of this property will certainly be destroyed by not letting it be used. What good does it to the city to harm these people and all these people that live out there? I understand another trailer was placed out there. Are we going to go get them and run them off of their property? Where's the heart in Benita? These people work hard and deserve a break. I think it can be waived, as so to speak, that they can, this won't happen in the future. But I can, I think we should consider these Lopez's appeals. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I raise a point of order for just a second, please?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. On our first presentation, if you read the background, Mr. Cope will summarize analyses conducted, conducted of potential water storage areas east of I-75 and north of Benita Beach Road. So if we leave commentary germane to water storage issues, or water issues that Mr. Cope will be presenting on, I would say that's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb McLean, publisher of The Banana Appeal, and Martha stole the words out of my mouth. We are here today, most of us in the audience, to listen to Roger Cope's presentation on the South Lee County watershed, which also includes the DRGR. So I would hope that you will open up the comments to cover from the concerned citizens. I would also like to compliment Benita Springs Utilities as, of the three major entities in our town, the best run financially and in quality of water. Secondly, the fire district as the best run and efficiency as a machine. And thirdly, the city, because the city has not learned yet to listen to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
Donna Stone. I live at Worthington Country Club. I'm a member of their external affairs committee, and also I'm a member of the Benita Beach Road Stakeholders Committee. But mainly, I am a citizen of Benita, and I'm very concerned about this proposed watershed area. I would like the council to vote on a resolution for a 24-month moratorium so that the city can do a complete and proper study on the impact of the changes to the watershed area. We still need information from the city on, number one, a hydrology report study on the watershed zoning changes and the effects on the aquifer, stormwater management, and flooding. Number two, how will 1.6 billion gallons of water displaced by one foot of water during a sheet flow be done with no storage for absorption into the aquifer with the proposed watershed proposal? Number three, how will the city get funding for the estimated $28 million for the Benita Grande repairs before 2035 without any changes to the watershed and an additional 7,000 homes? Number four, should there be a traffic area exception designated, designation be done for Terry Street and Benita Grande to protect the delicate flood zone area, dam, and conservation area? Number five, how will the city get the needed culverts to be built under 75 to stop the basin, New Orleans flooding effect that we have going on right now in our area? Number six, how will the city protect the area between Benita Grande and the beach from the water flow flooding? Right now, there is nothing that is to prevent additional flooding in your proposal. Number seven, how will the discharge water going into the rivers be filtered and treated to protect the rivers and the beach without proper aquifer storage, or the estimated needed 100,000-acre reservoir could possibly be developed from the existing mine area? Number eight, how will the improper release of water into our beaches affect the property value, the beach habitat, the economy, tourism, our health when using tainted water and our future as a community on the Gulf? Number nine, how will we get a ramp onto 75 from the watershed area for the safety and the protection of the proposed 7,000 homes in any evacuation or emergency? Number 10, how do the watershed changes affect the entire community infrastructure, needs, and taxes? For example, the needed $5 million for a one-engine fire station in the watershed area and the yearly tax impact to maintain it. The cost of building a new elementary school if an additional 7,000 homes are added to the city, and the tax impact to staff and maintain it. The impact cost of additional police protection, the impact of a possible, possibility of an addition to the middle school, or a new middle school, and what about the tax impact of a possible high school? With all of these unanswered questions, I do not feel the city council can approve the changes to the watershed area until the proper studies and figures are provided to the citizens and the city council. Please vote for a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? And I'd just like to remind everybody, you're welcome to talk about what you suppose may be presented today in about the watershed study. But if you would like to wait until the next public comment, you can say whatever you'd like to say about the DRGR and whatever you'd like. I just don't want to get into this big conversation about land use and the DRGR when there is no decision or pending decision on this agenda today. So there's no hurry. There's going to be lots of time to talk about it, even today. Okay? Have at it. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Fred Forbes. Got a, got a microphone that's trying to get away from me. Actually, the presentation that you're going to hear is where we should have started. And I really am looking forward to this, a lot of which I've said publicly, I think you'll hear. I just hope you all enjoy it, and I hope some way that some of the audience can get to talk to the presenter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, Jeff Brown, former chair of the Library Task Force. I'm here again to talk to you about possible vote of the council of leaving the library system. Back in March of 2011, the task force recommended to the council that we stay with the Lee County Library System, and that we work with them to look to expand our present library that we found to be definitely inadequate and old to about 35,000 square foot. We also recommended at that time that if we do not have proper cooperation from Lee County, that perhaps a referendum should be held to leave the county library system. But that has not been the case. The case has been that the library system and Lee County has worked with us to fulfill our need for a new library system. They had their engineering department look at our recommendation of enlarging the building and whether or not that was possible. They reported back that based on new construction guidelines and the age of the building, that would not be possible. But what would be possible was building of a new 25,000-square-foot library. They recommended that that cost would probably be anywhere between $12 to $13 million, based on the fact that we could use presently-owned land. If not, that cost can significantly go up because we'd have to purchase the land. The Library Task Force met with the engineering department, with the members of the county library, to discuss the size and proposed sites, and why they felt 25,000 square foot would be adequate for our community that we project significantly growing in the next 10 years. We came to conclusion that we could not find a site or a size until we determined the size of the library. And we couldn't come up with the size of the library until we find out what type of library would best suit Benita Springs. Now, based on our initial assessment, it was on a 2006 Johnson Engineering Report. But keep in mind, in 2006, we didn't even have the iPhone yet. We didn't have anything called a smartphones. We didn't have tablets. We didn't have readers. So much has changed since then that it just makes common sense to look at the present library and see what would fit the needs of Benita Springs. They committed, and you endorse, having the county spend $50,000 for a library study. That's where they're at right now. They're ready to go ahead with that study. They also committed in their budget $2.2 million each of the next five years in their capital budget to build a new facility. They are moving forward with us. They have made their part of the commitment that we have asked. Don't go backwards. Don't say now that we want to bail out. It's going to be a long road if we do. We would have to get a referendum on the ballot, and I don't think that could happen in the 2014 election. And there's no guarantee that the citizens of Benita would vote in favor of leaving the library. We have heard from the Friends of the Library and Chamber of Commerce, they'd rather have a stay with the library. We would then have to get a special taxing district approved by the legislature, and that's no guarantee either. But the biggest hurdle would be asking Lee County to leave the library system and stop paying the $4 million in revenue that we would send them. We know the difficulty the fire department has had with that. And then finally, where will we come up with the $12 to $13 million to build a new library? So I ask you, we're moving forward, we're making progress. Now is not the time to say, "Let's leave the county library system." If we find the cooperation does not continue, we can then, at a later date, make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Morning.
Morning.
Ron Pure. And when I'm talking about the library, I'd like to talk about it from the point of view of Taxpayer Action Group, AKA TAG. Just to remind you folks, six or seven or eight years ago, TAG had a commitment from Ray Judah. You can't hear me?
Not very well.
TAG had a commitment from Ray Judah at, I think, at the height of his power on the county commission, for $4.5 billion for Benita Springs to embark on building an addition preferable to a new library at that time, an addition on the present library. And there would be more money forthcoming if the city could put together a plan. That was six or eight years ago. Now, that plan never surfaced, unfortunately, and here we are, several million dollars later of having paid the county an enormous sum of money since, since we became a city, I'm told, about $50 million, for which we've only gotten about $15 or $16 or so million in return to operate the library as we know it in our city. You guys have got to do something. Now, with respect to what the gentleman had referred to earlier about voting, I think that there's a darn good chance that if we had, we asked for the cooperation of the supervisor of elections, we could maybe get a vote on as early as January, whenever the date is for the local city council elections, for at least a, an advisory question to be posed. By the way, an advisory question or a straw ballot was all that was required for the county to move forward with its biggest, one of its biggest money generators, and that is the 2020 preservation of property package that we pay into every year as property owners. I don't think we'd have a big deal with, with the county with respect to getting a go on this. After all, Santa Bell did it, and the city of Fort Myers Beach did it, so there's no reason in the world, and if they, if that's the case, then we go to court. And I think we'd have one hell of a case to pursue if they denied us the opportunity to operate on our own. They're giving us no big deal here with their $2 million out of the taxes that we'll pay, that we'll be paying next year as a set aside. So that's the library. I hope you'll do the right thing today, and I hope you'll have a vote ASAP. I'd just like to also mention the Everglades. I heard some mention about sheet flow. Look, there are people in the city that have looked back at old maps of Florida. The Everglades has been mapped out for 150 or 200 years. Depending on which map you look at, we're in the Everglades. Make no mistake about it. And so I think that we should hold that property aside for, for future generations. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. Public comments over. Proclamations and presentations, and my lovely assistant will help me here.
You're in trouble.
Not as much as he is.
Yes, I agree.
Charlie Myrick, would you please come forward, please? Hi, Charlie.
How are you? What up?
Okay, you noticed that we all dressed in pink. Yeah.
Me, too.
Wait, wait, wait.
No, no, I got the pink.
Whoopsie.
Got the green.
Most of us did. Anyway, and, okay, today, this is a proclamation, "Whereas a woman receives a diagnosis of breast cancer every two minutes, making the disease the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women in the United States, other than skin cancers. And whereas the American Cancer Society's estimates for breast cancer in the United States for 2013 are about 232,340 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women, and about 64,640 new cases of carcinoma in C I S is a non-invasive and is the earliest form of breast cancer, as well as about 39,620 women will die from breast cancer. And whereas after increasing for more than two decades, the female breast cancer incidence rates began decreasing in 2000, then dropped by 7% from 2002 to 2003. And whereas various organizations are spreading breast cancer awareness to both women and men throughout, or through outreach, education, screening programs, and having empowered women with the life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Ben Nelson, Jr., on behalf of the city council and the citizens, do hereby proclaim October 2013 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Benita Springs, Florida. Thank you very much for all you do. Please give Charlie a hand here. She's for you.
Thank you very much for inviting me here today. On behalf of Suteng G. Coleman in southwest Florida, I want you to know that the money that we raise here in southwest Florida, 75% of that money stays here in 10 local nonprofit groups to give mammograms, give back to cancer survivors, give back to men and women breast cancer survivors. Last year, we were able to give $678,500 back to our community. That's 75% of all the funds raised here in southwest Florida. The other 25% went to national programs for national research, and 56% of that money actually came back to researchers here in, in our Florida, in our state of Florida. So with all your help, the money that we raise stays here and goes towards national research, and we really couldn't do it without you here at Suteng G. Coleman. So thank you so much for all you do, and thank you very much for this proclamation.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and this time, would the, would the head lion, Bob Hilliard, come on up here, please? I don't know if you're the head lion or not, I just called you that. I bequeathed you head, head lion. Yes, everyone come up, please.
Good morning. Good morning. How you doing? Hi, how you doing?
Gildy Fowman.
This guy.
You know that guy.
This guy, I know.
I know Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I do. He knows me, too.
And here we go. "Whereas the Lions Club International has been dedicated to preserving sight since 1925, when Hellick Keller challenged the Lions to become knights of the blind in the crusade against darkness. And whereas Benita Springs Lions Club has been a vital part of the fabric of Benita Springs since they were chartered in 1962. And whereas the Benita Springs Lions Club in 2007 elected to commit its substantial resources to the creation of an independent eye clinic, which has since provided comprehensive eye care examinations and therapeutic care to thousands of adults and children who are medically indigent, and continues to be a worldwide leader in the funding and promoting the importance of vision health and support of those with vision loss. And whereas understanding the effects of vision loss is essential, and whereas all residents are encouraged to learn about the rights, skills, and abilities of the persons who are blind or visually impaired, and seek the most effective ways to provide them assistance, enabling those with vision loss to have equal access to services, businesses, and activities benefiting them and the entire community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Ben Nelson, Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim October 2013 as Vision Awareness Month in the city of Benita Springs, and express our gratitude to the Benita Springs Lions Club for their outstanding efforts to make our city a healthier, more productive place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much for all that you do. This is one of the number one, if not the number one, Lions Club in the world.
Yes.
Look at that. So be proud, Benita. Thank you so much for what you do. All right, picture. All right. Jesse Felger, please come forward. This is one of Benita's finest here. Works for the city of Benita Springs. Hey, Jesse.
Hi.
Nice sweater.
Thank you.
All right. This is for five years of service, and we like to recognize all our employees, and thanks for Carl, and for everybody for putting this, this together. I think it's just a real important part of this. We have a great family, a great team that works together here. We're so proud of everyone that works here. So it's a really big deal for us to go ahead and, and thank you for your five years of service, as of this third day of October 2013, in appreciation and recognition for the five years of public service to our city of Benita Springs. Jesse, thank you so much for everything you do, and well done. Thank you very much. Everybody. Okay, and now we have an informational update by the Benita Springs Utilities, or in regard to Benita Utilities, Council McIntosh.
Thank you very much. The city we are is, is in great part due to the partnerships we have with the Lee County Sheriff's Department, the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue District, and clearly the Benita Springs Utilities. Typically, Benita Springs Utilities comes in here expecting that nobody will have complaints because the water's clean, the sewer works, and that's the way it ought to be. But we asked them not too long ago to make sure that the public really recognized the environmental impact that they have, the financial wizardry that they play when they try to make things work on a very limited budget. So I asked if, if the board of directors would periodically ask one of their board members to come in and describe what's going on with BSU. So we've asked Jim Strzokansky to come. Jim, thank you for being here today, and it's all yours.
Thank you for having me. Good morning, council, Mayor Nelson, residents. I'm Jim Strzokansky, Vice President of the Board of BSU, and we're delighted to be here today to give you an update on what we're doing. In the past, we've had complaints that the only time we came to was when we wanted something, a price increase or something. And so we got together and said, "What we're going to do, or try to do in the future, is come to you twice a year and tell you what's going on." And we have our elections in March, so we'll come to in April. And then in September, the board has an all-day meeting where we talk about everything from finance to new projects, to people, operations, and everything else like that. So October is a good time to come to you and tell you what happened at that meeting and other things that are coming up. Okay, today I'm going to give you a little bit more background than I will in the future, but I just want to bring you up-to-date on where we are and what we're doing with Jim, thank you for being here today, and it's all yours.
Thank you for having me. Good morning, Council, Mayor Nelson, residents. I'm Jim Strzakanski, Vice President of the Board of B S U, and we're delighted to be here today to give you an update on what we're doing. In the past, we've had complaints that the only time we came to was when we wanted something, a price increase or something. And so we got together and said, what we're going to do, or try to do in the future, is come to you twice a year and tell you what's going on. And we have our elections in March, so we'll come to you in April. And then in September, the Board has an all-day meeting where we talk about everything from finance to new projects, to people, operations, and everything else like that. So October is a good time to come to you and tell you what happened at that meeting and other things that are coming up. Okay, today I'm going to give you a little bit more background than I will in the future, but I just want to bring you up to date on where we are and what we're doing with a lot of things. As you know, B S U was founded in 1971 as a supplier of potable water and sewage treatment to a 60-mile-square area that you see there, which includes all of Bonita Springs and then a part of unincorporated Lee County. And we're lucky, we mentioned, we have over 41,000 customers, and if you look at the northern edge of that, of our area, we get up to Williams Road, and luckily we'll have Hertz coming in as the 41,505th customer. One of the things I want you to understand is that we're a very capital-intensive business. We have over $400 million in assets in the ground. About $200 million of that is in plant and equipment, and $200 million in pipes and lift stations. And one of our biggest, one of the biggest things that we have to do is make sure that we operate those things correctly to give you good water and good sewage treatment. Because we have all this capital intensity, we have over $140 million in long-term debt right now. So you have to understand that if you look at our cost system, that our cost of debt is actually our biggest cost, and we really have to work on how we do our financings and how we handle our capital structure. And you look at those numbers in comparison to our sales, which are only $37 million annually, and you can see how intensive we are from a capital standpoint. Another thing I want you to understand is that we've gone through a real change. Through the 1990s and up until 2007, B S U was growing 10% a year. And all we were doing is adding new facilities, and adding things, and adding things, and adding people. And then all of a sudden, everything hit the fan in 2007, and actually, our sales and our use rates are approximately the same now as they were in 2007. So nothing has grown. So what happens? We had a lot of people who were working on adding facilities and everything else like that, and so we had to say, what do you do with those people? Unfortunately, we had to lay a lot of them off, and so we went through attrition. But the management, Fred Pardon and company, did a very good job in recognizing what the problem is and taking care of it. So as we say, we've gone from 136 down to 106 people. Then, as I mentioned, our biggest cost is capital. And we've done an excellent job. Debbie Batista, who's sitting out here, is our Chief Financial Officer, and she's worked with our banks and with our financial advisors to refinance a bunch of our outstanding loans. In 2012, we did about $25 million in a refinancing, and we took that from, part of it was at 3.75%, and part at 5.125%, and we took it down to 1.95%. Just recently, about a month ago, we took 7.4 million and took that from between 4% and 5% down to 1.26%. And if you look at the numbers there, that's what has saved us a lot of money and will help us to not have to raise rates in the near future. I like that part. Okay, so you want to compare us with other people, okay? And as you can see, B S U's total monthly rate to the average person for water and sewer is about the same as Collier County and Lee County. It's much lower than Fort Myers, Cape Coral, and Markwell Island. The city of Naples is lower, but one of the things you have to understand, they're an old system, and they don't have the capital charges, and they're not growing. And so that's really the difference between what they can charge and what we can charge. But we're, we think, very cost-competitive and a good buy for the people. The next thing everybody talks about is going green. And B S U is really trying to do all we can to go green. Many of you who pay bills know that you can go paperless, and I hope all of you do, because it saves us 50 cents a month per person, okay? But anyway, we've gone paperless, and then the left two pictures show our new natural gas vehicles. We've recently gone to putting seven of our vehicles onto natural gas, and we're looking at doing others. There's a financial impact. It costs money to put in the different equipment, but we think that we can pay out putting the vehicles on natural gas. And on the right side, you see some fertilizer. And we're one of the only companies, water companies, that actually doesn't throw the ends from our sewage treatment plant in landfills. What we do is take the bottoms from the sewage treatment, and we process that into good fertilizer, which we sell to farmers, and the orange growers are particularly guys who like this kind of fertilizer. So we put it out for auction and sell it every year. I told you about how we've been doing with the finance. The other big part, we said, is the operation side. And we have an excellent operating group. As a matter of fact, they've been winning all kinds of awards. Here you see three of the awards. The one on the left is a Fire Department Safety Award. Then we have, and we got that, we've received that now for a couple of years. The one in the middle has to do with on-stream operating from the Florida Department of Water Resources. And the one on the right has to do with an award that we got for the environmental protection initiatives that we've had, particularly that are turning the bottoms into fertilizer. Okay, so we come up to, this is a slide that we'll come to with every time, where we have discussion items for things that are coming up in the future, okay? Right now, one of the things, you may have seen in the paper, that we have a 230-acre plot of land that we have put up for sale. We do not need this land at any time in the future, and so we've advertised it. You've probably all seen the advertisements. We've had a number of bids. We're currently negotiating with the high bidder. We don't have any results yet, but hopefully we will in the near future. Then, I think the thing you'd probably like to hear is the fact that because we've been able to cut our capital costs, even though we've had other costs go up, like we have to give people raises, the cost of chemicals has gone up, the cost of power's gone up, couple other things, but we've been able to balance that out, and in this coming year, we are not going to have to have a rate increase. We have a couple of minor things that we're looking at with regard to our pricing schedules and whatnot, but we're not sure we were going to do them, and if we do them, they might actually give some people a little bit of a cost cut, but we have to look at those things. So that's what we have coming up. As I mentioned, B S U is in great shape, both from a financial and an operating standpoint, and really don't have that many things to talk about. Any questions?
Council, you have any questions for the gentleman?
I do.
Yes, Martha?
Of course. Who enforces the wellfield protection ordinance for our wellfields on Wellfield Road? We have an ordinance that protects the wellfields on Wellfield Road, our wells, not just on Wellfield Road, in the city. Who enforces that?
I have no idea.
That's a great answer, because that's
That's an honest answer.
That's an appropriate answer. If it's our ordinance, guess who gets to enforce it?
Well, B S U was doing the review.
It would be us, because it's our ordinance. Go ahead, continue.
Okay, and the next thing, this is just, I talked to one of our former employee about our water and how good it is, because you're pointing out Naples and Bonita, we have great water. But he was telling me, and I didn't realize this, with the reverse osmosis, you actually have to add chemicals back to actually make it more potable.
No, 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 we do not add, we do not add chemicals back.
Treatment.
What you have to understand, your water comes from two underground aquifers, okay? There's an upper aquifer that's 100 to 200 feet deep, and that is hard water that has a little bit of sulfur in it, okay? So we take that water, we treat it for hardness, and treat it to take the sulfur out, okay? Then, the water that comes from the 1,000-foot-deep aquifer is briny water that we put through reverse osmosis, okay? The water that comes out of reverse osmosis is perfectly pure water. I mean, there's nothing in it, and you wouldn't taste anything. But all we do is blend the two waters, okay? The water that you get has, is half from the, usually half from the upper aquifer and half from the lower aquifer, and that upper aquifer, even though we treat it, it still has some hardness and chemicals in it, okay? But we don't add anything.
That's a good answer. That's awesome. Okay, well, thank you. You know, I do enjoy my water. But he was telling me that, you know, you had to do a big process, and I really hadn't heard that before. Maybe that's something that we've abandoned from the past, and we've moved into the future.
No, I don't think we've ever done that. You know, like I said, with the reverse osmosis, there's absolutely nothing in the water. So you do need something so that people can taste it a little bit, you know, but just blending the two waters gives it that. We have never added anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Except chlorine.
Oh, yeah, okay, chlorine.
Just had to add that.
You're right.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Any other questions? Bill?
Jim, thank you for coming, and it's nice to have a report like you just gave us. I have a couple of questions. On the remaining debt, is there any possibility that you may refinance some of that, of the rest of the 140 million?
I guess I didn't mention that. Anytime we can refinance something, we do. You know, with rates coming down, we have, that 140 million is in various pieces, and if, you know, we found out last year we could refinance 25 million, so we financed it, and then this year we could finance the 7 million. Next year, if there's anything coming up, we'll refinance it.
Can you tell me how much free cash flow you have in the system? And I guess that may be appropriate comment for the CPA right now.
Debbie?
How many years of capacity do we have?
It actually will vary from year to year. The last few years, we've done the Fountain Lake Special Service Charge. We had done the Bonita Springs Golf and Country Club Special Service Charges the year before that, and we're doing the Imperial Bonita Estates this year. So that adds to the cash flow. So right now, between 7 and 9 million a year is coming in, and that's what we've been using to pay down the debt. The 7 million that Jim referred to that we refinanced this year, that was actually 17 million of bonds outstanding. We paid down 10. So that's what we're using our cash flow for.
Thank you very much. One more question. Do you anticipate, have you had an increased revenue stream from the new products, new residential construction coming online? Do you expect a good year this '13 to '14 in terms of new business, new people?
Well, as I mentioned, our volumes have been the same since 2007. I see all these new housing developments and everything, and we hope that we'll go, you know, back up to getting the 10% a year growth, but we haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with a question? Anything?
Let me just finish one question. What is, you know, we see on the East Coast, they didn't have a great management of their water supply, and they were at capacity for demand. They could not continue building at the rate that they were building. What is our capacity for our aquifer for build-out? If we say in the square mile, 40, 60 square mile, in the Bonita Springs Utility Service Area, what would be the build-out capacity there? Or how many gallons that might be?
Okay, let me just put it to you in this way.
Yeah.
When we were growing at 10% a year, we were putting in new facilities all the time. Now, I'm going to say roughly right now, we have somewhere between 20 and 30% extra capacity, because, you know, when you want to, when you're talking about putting on facilities, you have to plan five years ahead of time till you get it on-stream, okay? So we had planned for 10% growth, and then when we hit, hit the nothingness, then we have extra capacity. But we have enough capacity right now, we think, for the next five years.
Okay, my question was more, not so much of an infrastructure capacity, because I know, you know, B S U keeps ahead of the game on that. I voted for some of that. But basically, it was like the aquifer capacity.
We have plenty of aquifer capacity to take care of that.
Okay, well, is there a number for eventually where we get into trouble?
I don't have that number on the top of my head.
Thank you very much, sir.
Jim, in fact, part of your plan is that upper aquifer, there is, there is a limit to what you can withdraw from the upper aquifer. But your plan is, as the Bonita Springs expands and you need more water, is to pull it from that 1,000-foot one more and more, because it is relatively unlimited, the amount of water that you can get from that. Is that in fact the plan?
Assuming we can get the permits to do that, yes.
Assuming you can get the permits to do it, which is the answer to everything in life these days.
Okay.
And that's why we ran into trouble on the East Coast.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, well done. Thank you very much.
Jim, before you leave
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to thank Jim and B S U. Everyone in this room pays a water bill, is an owner of this business. This is a co-op. This is not a for-profit corporation. So you own that business, they're doing what you want them to do. The beauty of what they've done is they've made it easier to manage the city, for City Council to be able to focus on things that are otherwise important to the quality of life, because we can depend on B S U to provide clean drinking water and a sewer system that not only takes care of the sewage, but protects the environment. If you look at the new wastewater treatment plant, relatively speaking, zero environmental footprint. It takes all the hard sewage, turns it into pelletized fertilizer, and then the liquids go into irrigable water. So they're also working to take out all the septic systems in this city. It's a long process. This is a beach city. Everybody had their own sewage system in their backyard. It all leaks into our aquifers and to our sterile bay ultimately. So what they're doing is protecting your grandkid's grandkid's environment. And we couldn't do it without you, Jim. Thank you very much. But before we sit down, we have some people in the back who are rarely seen. You saw Debbie Batista, but Jackie Scholes is also back there. Jackie gets all the, stand up Jackie, so they know who they complain to most of the time. Jackie is the Customer Service Manager, and a regular face here at our meetings is Mary Mima. Mary's back there somewhere. Where's Mary? Mary is sort of the mainstay for the contacts between B S U and the city. I'm sorry to got a little carried away here, but that's a partnership that this city couldn't do without. So thank you, Jim. Great presentation. Thank you, B S U.
Nicely done. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to have, would Roger, Roger, of course you're here. Hi, Roger. This is a presentation by ADA Engineering, Roger Kopp, on the South Lee County Watershed.
You have a PowerPoint? Oh, cool.
Thank you, members, for allowing me to come and talk. My name is Roger Kopp. I work for ADA Engineering based out of Tampa. We did some work for South Florida Water Management District in 2009. The project was called the South Lee County Watershed Plan Update, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And, yeah, there we go. All right. And the first part of my presentation will be basically describing what the study was. And in that capacity, I'm essentially acting on behalf of South Florida Water Management District, describing that work. I will provide a few comments that are my own personal opinion. And I want it to be understood that they're my personal opinion, and that's it. Okay? Does this control the? Okay, the study was conducted basically to identify what the problems were in the, in the study area. And I'll show a map of the study area in just a minute. Then develop a model that would be used for the study. Look at what flooding problems were present from the Estero River south down to Benita Springs. Evaluate alternatives to address some of those issues that were raised. Then recommend a strategy that would be able to increase flood flows to the Estero River, Halfway Creek, and Spring Creek, and reduce flood flows to the Imperial River. And that's because in some prior storms, it's been noticed that the Estero River, Halfway Creek, and Spring Creek at US 41, water levels were considerably below top of bank, yet in the Imperial River, water levels were quite high. The study area, let's see, oops, excuse me.
Final recommendations.
There we go. Okay. This is State Route 82, right here. So this is Lehigh Acres.
That's Wisconsin.
Just about. Just about.
Green Bay Packers play right where he is now.
Sorry, carry on.
And this is approximately the Hendry, well, actually, the Hendry County line is here. This is the Imperial River headwaters area. Corkscreed Swamp National Sanctuary is down here. Benita Beach Road is here. The coast is here. So that's essentially the model domain. Here's the Estero River here. Here's Halfway Creek. Here's Spring Creek. Here's the Imperial River. Keel Canal is approximately right here. I-75 is sort of like this. All right? The problems that we identified were that there was not enough flow in the Estero River and Halfway Creek during flood conditions. There was too much water east of I-75, north of the Benita Beach, or Benita Springs Northeast quadrant. There was flooding in Spring Creek east of old US 41. Simulations of design storms indicated there would be overtopping of Strike Lane and Spring Creek and a tributary of the Imperial River at Pinecrest Lane. And the study findings found that there would be flooding in the Keel Canal area, which has been observed in the past. And then that there would be flooding in the Quinn and Dean Street area of Benita Springs. I'm assuming you all know where that area is? Okay, good. The, the report was in a draft state for a fair amount of time. The recommendations were somewhat controversial. And so there was a fair amount of deliberation after the issuing of the report. The final recommendations were adopted in 2011 by Lee County and South Florida Water Management District. And the, what I'm going to present are some recommendations pertinent to Benita Springs. I'm going to forego talking about areas in the Estero, because I don't think they're necessarily of all that much interest. One of the areas that we identified that were problems were in the, in the Spring Creek area. There's San Carlos Estates, it's just west of 75, and that's east of old US 41. And that's a relatively low-lying area, and it floods at the five-year storm in any larger event beyond that. And there, there's essentially no flow from east of 75 to west of 75 into that area. There are two weirs within the San Carlos Estates area, and then at US 40, old US 41. The, the north part of San Carlos Estates drains underneath the road at a relatively small culvert that has smaller capacity than, than the canals that are upstream of it within San Carlos Estates. West of old US 41, there is a railroad, there's a FPL easement, and the culverts underneath those, those berms are even smaller than what is present at old US 41. So typically, what you see in a river system is that as you move downstream, the culverts get bigger and bigger and bigger because the watershed increases. And in Spring Creek, the opposite occurs. As you go downstream, the culverts get smaller and smaller and smaller. As a result, at US, old US 41, there's a, there's a significant change in stage. The water level upstream east of old US 41 is much higher than the water level downstream because of this conveyance. We recommended that there be some, some replacements to these culverts that are downstream, or from US 41 downstream. There was some discussion during the study that it would be nice to have more base flow in Spring Creek. That could be provided from lands east of 75. However, there would have to be some changes made along kind of the north area of San Carlos Estates. Those changes would have to be controlled such that you didn't exacerbate the flooding problems within San Carlos Estates. To my understanding, I don't believe any of the culvert improvements have been made. I know there have been some, some cleaning out of exotic vegetation, but I don't believe the culvert improvements have been made. So that, that remains as an issue. So, so here's, here's the Benita, oops, I'm sorry. Not very good with my little guy here. I'll try to do a better job here. So here's US, here's I-75, here's the Benita Bill Canal, the Mariah weir is here. Fairway Estates weir is here. This is the main branch of Spring Creek. The north branch is here. Here's old US 41. Here's the railroad, the FPL. This culvert, this culvert, and this culvert are way too small. There's a culvert at Countess Lane right here that's way too small. And so I would say, unless something is, is different from what, from my current understanding, I think there remains to be some work that could be done in the Spring Creek watershed. We also made a recommendation that we look at trying to restore delivery of water from the, the Benita Beach area east of 75, and I'll, I'll go to a map. Here's I-75. Darn. Not very good at this. Here's Benita Beach Road, okay? Here's Benita Grand, I believe. Am I, am I, am I correct here?
What's enough?
Okay. Historically, water used to flow in this direction down towards Coquahatchee Canal. These developments are basically a wall. Benita Beach Road is essentially a wall. We looked at evaluating improved conveyance down towards Coquahatchee Canal. And I would say that's a project that hasn't been implemented yet, can be enhanced. It could be done in concert with the Southern Crew work, which is looking for funding. So this is an area where you could see some improvements. During the study, we looked at putting in a reservoir, basically sort of up here. And we had a hypothetical analysis where we said, just make it as big as you want to and store as much water as you want to. And the purpose would be to eliminate flooding on Quinn Street and the other street.
Dean.
Dean, okay? So basically, when water levels get up to the, to the yards, you turn on the pump. Infinite-sized pump, pumping into this reservoir. Don't worry about conveyance. Don't worry about getting underneath I-75. And we had something, I think, that was 1,200 acres and 10 feet deep, so that's huge. And it maybe had a half a foot drop in water levels in the Imperial River in that vicinity. So solving the flooding problem in Quinn and Dean Streets is, is a real challenge. And it didn't appear from our perspective that a reservoir would solve that problem. So it was not part of our recommendations. I really wanted to make a reservoir that could solve that flooding problem. And we tried everything that we could think of, and we couldn't solve the problem. So we, we found that, that this would have some benefit. And, and we, we feel that in the, in the Spring Creek area, there could be improvements that could be made. So now let's, let's talk about some of my, we're now shifting away from me talking as an agent of the Water Management District to me talking of my opinions, and my opinions only. I personally believe that additional storage is needed in the DRGR area. That additional storage would be beneficial for a number of purposes. Augmenting public water supplies at some point in the future. I understand that currently BSU is in pretty good shape. But any additional flows, as, as the prior presenter just mentioned, would be coming from 1,000 feet underground. And that water would be desalinated, and there's, there's a carbon footprint associated with that. The storing water east of 75 could be used to augment base flows in the, in, in the creeks that would, would make a more balanced delivery, and I think that'd be beneficial. So, and then the area east of 75 has historically been an area that experiences flooding. And from what I have heard from a number of people that commented during the conduct of the study, east of 75, people complain about flooding. They expect it to be dry out there, but it's not, and it's never going to be. So do we want to promote more development there? Maybe, maybe not. But if we do, it needs to be understood, those people are going to have water in their, their backyards. Here's a map. The blue and the black area here is relatively deep water, a couple of feet deep. Darn cursor. And, and it lasts for months, as you guys well know, okay? So now let's talk a little bit about the Northeast quadrant area here. In a perfect world, I personally would like to see a reservoir out there of some, of some sort, okay? But the area is slated for development, and, you know, some sort of development, right? It's currently low-density. Am I correct? Okay, so if the Northeast quadrant study recommendations are not approved, it will be low-density development, right? They'll have septic systems. You see that water there. Those septic systems aren't going to work during the wet season for months on end. Those septic systems become a pollution source, okay? So unless someone has a lot of money, they can buy that land to reserve for public purposes, you have to make the decision, what do you want? Do you want low-density development, or do you want something else? If you have something else, I strongly recommend you read carefully comments from Eric Livingston that I believe are part of the public record. And centralized stormwater within, say, some development that is done part of there could then be an option for the future, should you want to go to a more regional, multipurpose facility, okay? So don't have a bunch of little ponds. If you are going to permit some larger-density development, don't have a bunch of little ponds scattered all over the place. Try to focus it where there used to be mining and have one large stormwater detention facility. It needs to be more than just the minimum, because we don't want more pollution loading going to the Imperial River and to the coastal waters, correct? Nobody wants that. Standard stormwater treatment results in additional pollutant loadings. That's what Eric Livingston said, and he's right. He's been a public servant his entire career. He cares about public interest. So if you have centralized stormwater facility as part of this different development other than low-density, you can at some point in the future, should you find you have the need for minimum flows and levels, should you have a need for public water supply, you can then modify the operation of that stormwater facility to be a multipurpose facility. So those are some of my own personal thoughts. That's the end of my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Any questions? Yes, Peter?
You had mentioned the septic systems. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit more? I mean, I think we all kind of understand, the water level's high, septic needs to go somewhere. But could you elaborate on that?
Well, the way a septic system works is that the, the drain field has to be aerobic. There has to be oxygen in this, in this area where, where the water is percolating down through the gravel. And if you've got a high water table, it's not aerobic. It becomes anaerobic. Once it becomes anaerobic, the nutrients become essentially dissolved in the water column, and they can go anywhere, okay? And so because you have relatively high water tables out there, you either have to really mound things up high, okay? So that you have, you know, your drain field significantly above whatever the seasonal high is. And you need to, you know, factor in this for what the seasonal high is, okay? So that means you've got this big mound in the backyard. And if you don't have that, your septic system is a source of pollution rather than a sink. A properly operating septic system is excellent, but it's rarely found in South Florida.
What would be alternatives to the traditional septic system? I mean, you know, in the backyard, in other words, if they.
They have systems that are, that are called aerobic systems that are managed a little bit more intensely. You, it gets a little bit beyond what I think we want to talk about here. It's, it's a longer discussion. There are completely closed systems that don't rely upon septic systems that are, again, higher technology sort of things.
But it is possible. There is an alternative.
It is, it is possible, but under what I understand to be current Health Department regulations, rarely, rarely are they adopted.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, you have any other questions for the gentleman?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, in, in the study and in commentary, we've been told, well, you know, and you work with South Florida Water Management, I mean, you provided this study for them with oil engineering as well, that, okay, we're going to, you guys, if you prove this, it has to come to South Florida Water Management for permitting and approval. So my understanding is, if there is a problem, it's up to us to set the standard, because really, stormwater rulemaking hasn't changed for like a gazillion years in Florida. And I know that they, they want to and have been looking at, and maybe even did some rule-changing last week. But unless we get standards built in that both reduce nutrient loading and hold water on-site, we're not going to get what we hope to, to get. Is, is that correct? Because South Florida Water Management wants to find a way to help people to accomplish their project within the rules that they have. They can't, they can't make a higher standard than what they already have. Is that getting you in hot water? I don't want to, but.
Yeah, the, the Water Management District has rules, and they follow their rules.
Yes.
Okay. And according to testimony that's on the public record from Eric Livingston, a guy I, I trust implicitly, his opinion is those rules are insufficient to not result in an increase in pollutant loading to the bay.
So it would be up to us if we set a standard that was above what, what is both in the report and what is currently in the rulemaking, and if, also, that also goes for flooding as well. If we create this reservoir or, or some kind of way to minimize the quickness of the flow getting into the river and the treatment of the flow going into the river, that it really, as a community, we can't expect that it would be any different than happened in the 1980s to development standards unless we set it for our own community.
Well, I think the Water Management District standards are stricter than they were in the 1980s. However, I, I do believe that, that, that the minimum that the Water Management District would require may not be sufficient to assure that there, there is no increased pollutant load to the Imperial River and tidal waters.
And that goes for flooding as well?
I, it depends. If. If, I think I'd rather not comment on that. I haven't, you know, I'm coming down here because I understand there's an issue here. I was asked to come down. I haven't done a very detailed assessment.
Let me get to that.
Very honest.
You were asked, did staff ask you to come, I mean, it really doesn't matter, but did staff ask you to come down here, or, I mean, it's been very helpful.
Name is on the sheet.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Now, when you refer to that, the person that you have great respect for, I'm sure he's really good, what he does, you kind of, did he make his comments specific to the Imperial River in specific, or was this a general, kind of a comment about water management's rules in general? Do they work everywhere else, but they wouldn't work in this case? Or he was more or less saying that the water management's rules aren't sufficient to take care of water quality standards? Which one was it, do you know?
I don't, you know, I read the document.
Right.
I don't have 100% recall of exactly what was written, but my impression on reading it was that the rules that would be the typical standards applied
Sure.
by the Water Management District through the permitting process would result in a net increase in pollution load to the bay.
To the bay, in this specific?
In this specific situation. He did, he did produce a document, I don't know who paid for it, but he did produce a document that was, that commented specifically on the northeast quadrant plan, is my understanding.
Yeah, I only ask because, you know, because if it's really kind of an admonition regarding those water treatment quality methods altogether, well, then we've got a lot of work to do, because then everyone is kind of like contributing to the pollution load everywhere if it's not, if we're not able to do that everywhere.
Well, undeveloped land, let's say undeveloped land has got a pound of pollutant per acre, all right? Agriculture, let's say has four pounds of pollution per acre, and we're just talking in general terms here. Urban is maybe two or three, okay? If you're going to then say, okay, we're going to take this urban pollution and we're going to treat it, you're not going to take all the pollutants out of that, out of that urban runoff, because there's just a certain inherent limit to how efficient these detention ponds and retention ponds are, okay? So what happens is, as a result of changing from a natural land use to a developed land use, and applying a detention pond per current Water Management District regulations, you see a net increase in both volume and pollutant load.
What about changing from agricultural to rural? Would you see a net decrease?
It...
Automatically?
Not automatically, potentially so.
I mean...
It depends, it depends upon...
Say you've got 80 acres of cows, and then you supply that, and you transfer that over to, I don't know, 80 houses? Net decrease?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, I would have to go through the numbers. I didn't do a detailed analysis. I'm working on this specific sort of situation up in Charlotte County, and in that case, you know, getting rid of the ag is a significant drop in pollutant loading.
Needless to say, you would probably say, and this, just to kind of, maybe wrap this up a little bit, is that, in general, it's a pretty complex system. It's not as easy as one person or the other person would think it is. It's a complex situation, and when it comes to water quality, and when it comes to the ability to transfer that water safely, I mean, it's complex, right?
Right, right. But in the case of my understanding, the coastal waters in your general vicinity here are classified, I believe, as impaired, okay? And if you have an impaired system, there should be a reduction of pollutant load to that impaired system, so that you can get it back to where it used to be, so the snooker are happy, you know? And so that's where we want to go, is we want to go to a healthy ecosystem in our coastal waters, because fishing is a big industry down here.
So it's impaired now, whatever we do should be towards making it not so.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, you want, you want your residents to be able to go fishing and have a good day when they're out there fishing.
Anybody's going to argue with that.
Right.
Mayor.
Right.
All right? Good?
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and to that point, just two things, is that, so our need for reduction of nitrogen and phosphorus, those things in the Imperial River, from Mr., who happened to be the Bureau Chief of Wastewater Management, eh, Wastewater Management for Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the state of Florida, so he knows his stuff, said that the Imperial River needed to have a 24.9% reduction. So going to 10% is why you say there would be a net increase, because you still have to reduce what's caused by maybe increased lawns and fertilizer and all that kind of stuff for the development, and then the impairment needs to be reduced that's already there. I think that's what you were saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So my other question was, and it's just flown out my brain, okay, so if we, if we go ahead, or if we don't go ahead, whichever Ms. Counsel chooses to do, I don't know, but would we, if we go ahead and say, okay, we're going to do 73 units, accept this northeast quadrant plan, would we be missing an opportunity? I mean, you're telling, you're saying, look, there's a reservoir that could happen here, which by the way, was in a study through the, I think Chinup or the Agency on Bay Management. There was a recommendation for a reservoir to be there, it came up in 2012, in the mine area. If we don't go and say, okay, this is what's on the ground, we've got ditches, we've got, you know, swales here, we have certain kind of ponding there, we have natural flowways, if we don't go ahead and say, this is, in this limited area, this is what we have on the ground, and this is the need we have to address, and then say, here are the potential projects we could do to address them, if we don't do that first, we're losing, in my opinion, are we losing an opportunity to correct it once and for all, or mitigate it?
The, as I said before, there will be some development that's going to occur out there. The question is, is development going to be a net benefit to the city of Bonita Springs and to the coastal waters and the rivers, okay? And you, as a board, have, as a council, have a chance to consider a variety of options. And if there is a more intensive development, you have the option of working cooperatively with the landowners and the proposers to come up with something that is a true benefit to the city and to the coastal waters. And there's a variety of ways that you can get there. And use your creativity if you were going to consider going to some higher level of development east of 75. And it, it's not like I'm saying you have to build a reservoir right now, I don't agree with that. But I think at some point down the road, you may say yourself, I wish we had kept that area as one central area where all the stormwater was going, because then we could have done something much easier. I mean, you take a look at the brooks, you take a look at, you know, any of these developments around here, there's a pond here, there's a pond here, there's a pond here, there's a pond there. If you want to do something a little bit larger, you can't do it, because you can't put a wall on someone's backyard, right? But at some point in the future, you may say, we really need a reservoir, because we've got to maintain minimum flows and levels for fish spawning, okay? How can you do that if you haven't centralized that stormwater management in an area where basically they have a clean slate, okay? So what I'm saying is, use your creativity and think of the long-term benefits to both the environment and to the city, and try to come up with something where everybody wins.
Good. Roger, thank you very much, and we hope to see you later on when this conversation really coalesces and time to make a decision, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for caring, and thanks for coming.
Okay, Counsel, let's go to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you wish to have pulled on here? We've got items A through I. Take a careful look. Anything? You're okay?
Move to approve.
Move to accept, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, we have second reading, public hearing of following ordinance, and a public comment will be allowed at some point.
Thank you. If I may read the title block into the record, this is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, calling for and ordering a binding referendum to be held on February 25th, 2014, to determine whether a majority of the electors within the area proposed to be annexed are in favor of annexation. The referendum for annexation is in a portion of Pelican Landing, as described in this ordinance, assignment to City Council, District 1, upon the effective date of the annexation, requesting that the Lee County Supervisor of Elections to conduct the election in accordance with the state laws and regulations, providing mail ballot language, directing that the notice of election be prepared and given, providing for severability, squirmor's errors, and effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was read, you had your first public hearing on October 2nd, 2013. I have reviewed the affidavit publication, and it is legally sufficient.
Okay, Counsel, if you don't mind, I'm going to go to public comment this time. Any members of the public wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward.
There you go. Now, this is on the annexation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's William Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, could you please pull the microphone down? There you go, I want to be sure people hear you.
William Lewis, write the newsletter, let's talk Bonita politics. I make this very short, gentlemen and ladies, I don't know whether you're aware of it, but we're talking now in Astero, and what they're talking about, one, they're talking about terminating the EDC between Bonita and Astero. They're talking about it. Not that that's a loss to them, or to you with that outfit, but that's another story. Secondly, and I believe most important, they're also talking about, come next September, they will not accept any students from Bonita. Now, that probably goes against you, Dr. McIntosh.
Mr. Lewis, I have to ask you to keep your comments
Oh, okay.
directed towards me or to Counsel General.
All right. I apologize.
Thank, that's no...
But anyway, I don't know if they can do that by contract, by legal, or what, but they're talking about it, and it's something that you should be aware of. Not to get on the sidetrack, but you know, 100 years ago, I was born in a small town in Pennsylvania. They had one traffic light, but they had a high school. 35, 40 years later, I go back because I had a relative there, and lo and behold, they had one traffic light, but they had a high school. Here's a city with 46,000, 45,000 residents, permanent, and do not have a high school. A charter high school, gentlemen and ladies, is the wave of the future. Doesn't cost anyone sitting here or in the city a dime. That's right. Think about it. It doesn't cost on a charter high school 10 cents, but that's a side point. These are the two things that they are presently talking about, and something that you should be aware of. It's the repercussions of what you're doing, not the fact, all right, you want it all unincorporated area, you go back, grab the brooks. Take Coconut Mall. Why not? It's unincorporated. Take the Hertz Corporation, they just said we're moving in, you can grab it. You have a tendency to wait until everything's built, and then you go to grab it. $400 million is the appraised value, so I've heard, in the area of Pelican Landing. 400 million. That has nothing to do with what you're doing? Wow, that's okay. Well, thanks for your time, but it's something to think about on that high school bit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I believe that we have in process a study to have a charter high school, and that will be a joint effort with the YMCA, pending, of course, if they're not too landlocked. There's a lot of studies going on right now. We do have approximately 1,000 students that would be, could come to the school, but remember, a charter school also requires parental involvement, so I'm sure the first enrollment years will be around 200. And with regard to Mr. Lewis, I love him, and I'd love to have the money to buy him hearing aids.
Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Rick Steinmeier. I still believe that the people in Pelican Bay asked to become part of the city, and we didn't...
Pelican Landing.
Pelican Landing, excuse me.
Don't spread rumors like that, because...
Oh, my God.
That's all we need.
My stash doesn't allow that.
Well, I feel that Pelican Landing, for good reasons, wanted to be part of the city rather than be part of Lee County, and the people of Bonita Springs wanted to be Bonita Springs rather than be part of Lee County a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
A move to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve, and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, we're going to have public comment on any item that you want to talk about, just come on forward. Anyone from the public? Please come forward.
For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. The Conservancy has provided testimony and recommended suggestions at the past two council meetings with regard to the DRGR Northeast Quadrant Study. Our recommendation was, and still is, to set aside the suggestions contained in the Baraco Stewart Plan, and instead of moving forward with increasing density and intensity in the Bonita DRGR, to take a comprehensive look at the watershed in that area and in the surrounding areas. Our concern is that the Imperial River watershed continues to be tremendously impacted, and flooding concerns are a constant issue for the downstream residents. Fortunately, we don't have to go back to square one with this, a lot of the work has already been done, the RAW report, the South Lee County Watershed Plan update, which you heard about today, these are really the foundational starting points for this. In order to provide counsel with additional support for our determination that the next step needs to be looking comprehensively at the watershed, the Conservancy did request that Eric Livingston, who is the retired program administrator for stormwater at the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, we asked him to take a look at the Baraco Plan, so I believe that that was what was being referenced earlier in Mr. Livingston's comments. He was looking specifically at the Baraco Plan. He did this on behalf of the Conservancy, but we did not pay him, he did this pro bono. I provided this information to you, and I did want to read into the record a portion of his conclusions, because we believe this really sums it up, and I quote, as written, I believe, meaning Mr. Livingston, "That the Northeast Quadrant Plan will not achieve the desired objectives, especially related to protecting and restoring the downstream Imperial River. In addition, as written, this plan will lead to increased stormwater pollutant loading being discharged downstream, that likely will enter the city's MS4, and become the city's and its taxpayers' responsibility for reducing the pollutant loads," end quote. It's not just about the environment, it's natural resources, it's quality of life, and it's the economic vitality of the city. So we ask that you take a look at Mr. Livingston's information that we submitted to you before you reach your decision point at the next meeting, and please, the Conservancy wants to be a resource for any questions, any concerns, any additional information, we are here for a resource for you, and we really would like to continue engaging in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Carolyn Gallagher, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the DRGR. I'm not going to be available at the next meeting. Incidentally, it was a great thought-provoking briefing that Mr. Cobb did this morning, and I really appreciated it. it. I know that the issue has been ongoing since 2000. I always have trouble with a microphone, but it's not an issue that's going to go away. It's going to keep coming up until either developers get their way, or the city has a quantitatively supportable position for keeping the density low in the DRGR. We've had several studies in the past, 2005 Rawls, 2008 Delisi, and 2013 Baraco, and maybe others, but we have dropped the ball between them and lost our momentum for finding a solution. At the last meeting, Mayor Nelson said, "We have studied this to death, and should put this issue to rest or do something creative." I heard that word this morning also. I challenge the council to take his suggestion and do something creative. A voluntary task force formed from all parties who have a stake in the DRGR to include experts in flooding and water quality, developers, interested residents, et cetera, could coordinate all the studies, determine their conflicts, ferret out the truths, and form a big picture. The task force could work with their neighbors to the north and south to determine their growth patterns, what they're planning for controlling water, and how their actions will affect us, and vice versa. It may take years to fully understand the issues, but we can eventually understand how the whole puzzle fits together. Then goals can be formulated and steps taken to actualize them. For example, mitigating the flooding could be tackled first by budgeting for those projects and completing them over several years. If this works, then the city will know if and where density could be increased. Furthermore, there are some people here tonight who support a moratorium on increasing density on the GR. This could be a helpful tool to gain time to understand the situation and formulate a plan of action, but my fear of a moratorium is that it will be too short to allow a thorough and complete assessment. My experience with moratoriums is that there is always a product expected at the end. Forcing a task force to produce an incomplete product defeats the whole process of trying to do the best thing for the city. Therefore, I ask that if you decide to do a moratorium, make it for at least three years. Allow unlimited yearly renewals. This issue needs to be done slowly, thoughtfully, and completely, once and for all. If we use time wisely, take it slow and steady, we can develop an optimal solution, a long-term solution, for the city. In conclusion, I ask the city to establish a task force for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Meg Jacobson. I live in San Remo at Palmera, which is at the east end of Bonita Beach Road, almost the east end. We already have about, well, I think, 4,500 homes that are going to be built east of Village Walk, so I'm really concerned about your thoughts about the future. We're only a few years old. Why do we have to grow fast now without planning? I'm a supporter, actually, of the moratorium. Three years would be great. I'd settle for two if I had to negotiate. We just can't take the chance on the flooding. Water is everything to Bonita Springs. It's our source of fun and recreation, a sustenance. It's our source of landscaping. It's our source of everything. How can we possibly make a decision, we, you, how can you possibly make a decision on November 6th about the future of the city? It's probably the most important decision you will ever make in your public service life. The most important. We can't be in a situation where we have to build this bloody reservoir when it's too late. We have a chance now to think about the future, and I beg you to please think about the future. Give us a moratorium. Don't make a decision to build it this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Hello.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Kathy McGrath, a little mixture of things. I recently saw criticism in the press about city council meetings, excuse me, city council meetings not being convenient for the working people, and I like to remind everyone that there are two meetings a month. The second one is in the morning, but the first Wednesday, there is one at 5:30, so all of you working people who would like to participate, you can. Number two, I just wanted to remind you, this money that came from the Friends of Nature Place to the city, most of that was from Gary Price's retirement party, and it is going to go back into Nature Place. We're still working on a gopher viewing platform, so it will be spent wisely, and thank you again, Gary. And again, you're going to be, continued to be attacked and everything, and I said before I was disappointed, and I'm still disappointed, but that's life. Everyone has a right to express their feelings. And as far as them being forced into incorporation in Astero, nobody is forcing them. There's two factions there, just like there were two factions with us 13, 14, 15 years ago. And what happened was, our dedicated people made the studies, just like their smart people are doing up there. Nobody's trying to grab anything. Nobody's trying to wait until it's the jewel of Southwest Florida. This decision has to be made by the people, and it will be. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you know what? I forgot. Can I take somebody's thunder away?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
It's not mine, so.
Riverfest, everybody, this coming Saturday. Please join us. We have the challenge down the river with the paddling, and the kayak, and the canoe. We have the duckies that are gonna go in the water. Janet will talk about that. And we have our fish fry, our mullet, our traditional mullet fish fry. And please, don't shake your head when you say mullet. These mullet, these fishermen, been here for generations. They get the mullet out in the Gulf where they're good, and they're good eating. So come support us, because it's got a fun things, and especially for the kiddies. We've got a petting zoo. We have hay rides. We have a pumpkin patch. We have pumpkin decorating. No knives, magic markers, but the beverage cart will benefit the Bonita Springs Assistance Office. I know there's a lot of conflict, Naples, Fort Myers, but please come support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. I've been to the library quite a few times. I don't know if anybody else in here uses the library, but every time I've been there, it seemed to be adequate. People are being served quite efficiently by the staff, and I'd like to hear from the staff that happens to be here, whether they think they're inefficient, or obsolete, or outnumbered, or that they need to expand. I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward.
Hi, Jennifer Hecker. I am the Director of Natural Resource Policy for the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. I've been working on water policy for 10 years now in Southwest Florida, and I just wanted to share briefly with you that the stormwater issue is a very big one. I myself sat on the DEP statewide stormwater technical advisory committee for three years. The state recognized that its stormwater standards needed to be updated. It actually commenced three years of rule development and drafted rule language. That got shelved several years ago. The South Florida Water Management District, we have pushed over and over through the years to update its standards, at least with regards to projects that discharged to impaired waters, those waters not meeting state water quality standards or outstanding Florida waters. So since the Imperial is an impaired water, I just wanted to briefly mention that although we've gotten some policy guidance update, updated standards for development, we know that those are not legally binding and enforceable at this point, and the district recognizes that as well. So those are not always implemented where needed, which is why the district this past week, last Thursday, at its governing board meeting, voted to commence rule development to update its stormwater standards for projects that discharged to impaired waters and outstanding Florida waters. However, rule development, in our experience, can take years and years, and meanwhile, you all need to move forward with your planning processes. We really hope that you do what you need to do at a local level to enact requirements that are appropriate for projects that go into this area so that they don't further cause or contribute to the downstream waters continuing to be impaired, unsafe for swimming and fishing. And we are working very hard to try to support your efforts to do that. We reached out to Eric Livingston, but we did not pay him. He offered that expert opinion completely free of charge because he was concerned about what was being proposed, causing further water quality degradation, or at least not meeting your total maximum daily load pollutant limit, which requires a 24% reduction in total nitrogen. 10% reduction is not going to get you there. What happens then is the delta, the difference, has to be borne by the taxpayers of this community. So we already have enough on the backs of the taxpayers. We feel that this is an opportunity to do things right out there, to make sure that we can alleviate these flooding and water quality problems. We're here to support your efforts and work with you, and please feel free to reach out to us. We hope to bring you more resources and experts like this, free of charge. We have no agenda other than to protect the water resources and our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes. Like I said, I wish we had started with this. I did make that suggestion. I said, "I wish we had started with talking to people like Roger Kopp before we've arrived at the point we're at." One thing I would really like to compliment BSU on the presentation, little comment. They got a cocktail mix of roughly 50/50, shallow water to deep water wells. If that upper aquifer gets messed up at all, that means you have to pump more from the deep wells, and that water per 1,000 gallon is going to cost more, because it has to go through reverse osmosis. Now, we do need this moratorium. As the mayor correctly said, this is a highly complex issue. If you vote to move forward with this, what will happen, quick as a lick, there'll be ordinances passed to modify the comp plan, everything else. This thing of working cooperative with the landowners, there's examples all over Bonita Springs of owners that work cooperatively. That building that's on Old 41, that looks like a box, I know even the city council commented about that. So I would urge you to at least seriously consider doing the moratorium, because that would allow you the time to get good, independent firms, like the one that Roger Kopp is from, the people that did the 2005 aquifer study, other water quality experts, to help you develop the standards the city needs to set for development in areas like the DRGR. Once you get those, if, I'm sure, development can occur in there, but it will not mess up the city and will not create a tax burden on the rest of the city. I'd rather pay taxes to widen a road and fix a road than pay extra taxes to clean up a mess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please come forward.
Alberto Bayer. First, I'd like to express some words of appreciation for the other residents that have come here to express their concerns, particularly my colleague behind me here, which I wish he would run for council. I'd like to echo her recommendation relative to the task force, because it's very sensible, and we should move forward with it. There's a significant need for alleviation, which is basically the bottom line. We have impaired waters, and it's a categoric fact, and our resources should be used at this point to move forward with the corrective maintenance that is merited. As far as the density factor, we're already excessively dense, so I think that's a no-brainer, and we'll just leave it at that. I trust that your considerable decision, or that your decision will be indeed considerable, and support my recommendation along those lines. In regards to the BSU, I'm very disappointed as a member of this utility, as a 23-year-old resident of the city of Bonita Springs, and as an owner of more than just a primary residence, because I am an investor in real estate. Namely, to give you the specific example of why, I've asked the Board of Directors in the forum that is designed for members to express their concerns, which is when there's board meetings, to give me the permit number and the final inspection relative to the installation of the pipes by Roheley Plumbing, which was a subcontractor that BSU hired in their capacity as general contractors for that project, when we were switched from the septic system to the central sewer system, because I found a deficit in the subject construction in regards to my primary residence. I couldn't see the cleanouts there. They're supposed to be at ground level when I had plumbing trouble, and I needed to move to clear the pipes. So obviously, what I just wanted to do is to get a look at that final inspection, to find out who was the inspector that missed it, which must have cleared it. And I got a letter from Don Thompson, who's their attorney, stating that from now on, everything had to be in writing. So I requested in writing for the permit number and the final inspection, and I don't get any response. Next thing I know is about a month ago, my neighbors next door have plumbing trouble, and they find that their house is unseptic, that even though the cleanout that exists there, which is the one which we gave as an easement, all of us, and they're being charged the assessment for the disposal, that's already been articulated about earlier, they were still unseptic. So how many homes are unseptic? Was any permits pulled at all? Is the reason why I don't get my permit number and my final inspection is because the general contractor never pulled permits, nor did the subcontractor in question? Can I please have some answers? I look forward to receiving them.
Thank you, Ms. Beyer. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, Ron Pure, Bonita. Someone said earlier something about the library, the opportunity of the library to expand the present location would not be in keeping with some new code that has been developed. I looked at that, or I should say, we looked at that several years ago, when we were really trying to promote the expansion of the current location. And we got maps and showed drainage areas and so on and so forth. We got some outside folks to weigh in, and they said they saw no problem with expanding the library off of West Terry that we know today. So I would urge anybody who's with the county saying that an expansion is not doable to come in and show you exactly why. I think that's the direction we ought to be going in. Now, Spring Creek was mentioned. I didn't expect to hear it during the presentation by that gentleman, and I thought it was pretty thorough. And I've got to tell you, Spring Creek is a pretty pristine area, and our friends in Bonita Bay and Pelican Landing in particular should take heed here. I had tried several years ago to get some dredging done at some bottlenecks in Spring Creek. I mean, real shallow areas that are impediment to not only boats with V-holes, but those float things that have aluminum cans on the side of them that run around the bay and the Gulf. But it's a very delicate area that we've got over there, and we should really, if that's one of the end results of water flow, we ought to be taking that to heart, because that is a valuable piece of watered real estate. And it graduates, if folks aren't aware, eventually into Astero Bay, which is the first estuary that was granted the highest level of recognition in the state, as you may recall. These are, these are very, very, let me repeat, pristine areas that deserve our utmost attention. In addition to, again, to restate, this is all, lest we forget, part of the Everglades, as it once was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none? Okay, good. We're going to item 10. Audrey, what do you have for us here?
Thank you. This is an appeal. It's actually a continuation of an appeal that you held on July 17th, 2013, and again, it was continued a few different times to try to work with the applicants. The applicants have been, I don't see them here today. They have been here before, and I would ask that if you can refresh your memory from the July 17th, this is a question, whether or not equitable estoppel would apply in a situation where someone has called and contacted. a situation where someone has called and contacted Community Development to find out information for placement of mobile home, obtained the information, but did not realize the person giving the information did not realize that the person was in the interchange area. And so, late in the game, the city went through that process. There's a memorandum in the back that explains how to finish the process. Again, you have heard all the testimony, and through that testimony, you should have received the facts. Just as a reminder, equitable estoppel occurs when a property owner in good faith reliance has acted upon some act or omission by the government and made a substantial change in position, or has incurred extensive obligations that it would be inequitable or unjust to destroy the right that they acquired. In this case, it's complicated because it's not as if we're only applying a land development code of rule, we're applying our comp plan. And in that situation, and as pointed out in the green sheet, city council is in a terrible situation that whatever way you decide, there always could be a lawsuit. There could be a lawsuit by Mr. Lopez for denial. There could be a lawsuit from any adjoining property owner for inconsistency with your comprehensive plan. Regardless of how, on page three of the green sheet, and as you can see, the green sheet unfortunately got longer and longer as we progressed on this, there are some different options that you can consider today, provided that for your guidance. But staff did make, suggested the recommendation that regardless how you decide today what to do with the appeal issue, you may want to explore the possibility of creating interchange zoning. And that was something that Mr. Leroux had worked on, and then it was taken out during the course. And then do a zoning on those properties, any property within the interchange, taking out the planned developments because they don't need any rezoning. And then people could, one, everyone would be on notice that the zoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as, I mean, you would allow non-conforming uses to exist, and then once those non-conforming uses are complete, that land could be assembled and be used for the interchange purpose, and hopefully that would also increase values in that area and redevelop that area accordingly.
Okay. So far as, I understand the recommendation of what to do once we make this decision, but is there a recommendation in itself on what decision should be made as far as the disposition of this particular one?
I think you have a tough call. I'm not, there's no legal recommendation.
Thank you so much.
Well, I think staff has a recommendation, though.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go right ahead.
I just want to let, just revisit what Audrey said a minute ago. And the bottom line is, is it's staff's belief that this is a violation of the comprehensive plan, should you allow this to go forward, and therefore, our recommendation is to deny the appeal. But let me say something a little bit further, and actually, I was talking to Mr. Steinmeier about this earlier today, and that is that a city enacts these kinds of restrictions because areas are viewed as transitioning over time. And if the city wants a particular area to become something else over time, you certainly just don't wipe people out of it. But what you do is you prohibit future new uses of the same type, so that over time, as people change over, as ownerships change over, that you have the opportunity for the new vision to become a reality. And I think that is where the council has been on this for some period of time, and again, we're recommending denial on the appeal. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, just to throw in here, you're all familiar with this particular area. That interchange area is very important to the city of Benita Springs. I think that the city has worked hard in a lot of respects to go ahead and get the area to where it's cleaned up, it's ready for the development that the surrounding communities really deserve to have quality development there. I feel, I feel bad for the gentleman that, that he made plans, and he made it on, you know, bad information, possibly, from a variety of sources. And I think that there are things that we can do in the future to keep that from happening again. But I would agree with staff here. I don't, I think that we should deny the appeal. This is my opinion. We did, I think we went over and above trying to, you know, make, suggest some alternatives for him, to try and find a buyer for his property, to try to find other options for him. But I think that if, if that area is going to be, come up to its potential, it is a gateway area. It needs to be something better than really what it is, and I think that this is a start. But it's not the finish of it. As Audrey says, if you indeed decide to, whatever you decide to do here, we need to follow through with this, and we need to be sure that there's a plan to where we actually earmark these areas for, for future development, and that the people that know, you know, that they can't build certain things there. So that would be my recommendation. But counsel, what's your feelings on this?
I would make a motion to deny and follow through with an interchange zoning recommendations to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future. And what you suggested, oh, that's getting too long.
That's okay.
But, you know, whatever process needs to happen over at Community Development to make sure that correct information is imparted to our residents.
Yeah, good. There's a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion, a second? Any other further discussion? Yes, Bill?
I have a question. Community development allowed one sometime, and I don't know anything about it. Could I get an explanation of that? I don't know when it was.
For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, the permit was issued in 2006 by Lee County. And the only thing, I didn't talk to staff, but my guess is, is when a building permit comes in, they do have zoning reviewers, and when you check, it is zoned MH1. It has the right zoning, but it doesn't have the right land use classification.
Thank you.
And in our office, we looked at both.
Thank you.
So, and you feel pretty, along those lines, you feel pretty sure that you don't have to make adjustment in your system to where when somebody calls?
It is, it has been addressed, and all of our planner on calls know, check the land use.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to, as stated by Martha there. Any other comments? John or Carl, do you have anything else to add? Okay, good. Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Okay. Would you like to take a break?
Yeah, I would love to take a break.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break, or thereabouts. Please be here, back in your chairs at 10 after 10, or 10 after 11.
Oh, that's a lot of time.
10 after 11.
Okay.